Good afternoon, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call our Suffolk City Council work session to order. We do have three items for discussion this afternoon. The first one is the 2045 Comprehensive Plan update to include changes in the master transportation plan. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, the Department of Planning and Community Development's principal planner Keith Kennedy will provide an overview of amendments to the draft 2045 Comprehensive Land Use Plan since your August 21st meeting. In addition, Kristen Tench, Senior Project Manager with VHB Engineering, will follow Keith and provide an overview of the draft master transportation plan.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dooman, and members of city council. As stated by the city manager, this is an update on Suffolk 2045 project in preparation for a city council's public hearing on the comprehensive plan, which is scheduled for November 20th. I want to identify a couple of relatively minor changes that have been made to the plan since it was presented to you on August 21st. But I'd like to start out with a little bit of background, particularly for folks who might be seeing this presentation on this project for the first time. Of course, as you all know, this has been about a two-and-a-half-year process, a really significant commitment from the community to move us through this process and get us to where we are right now. We followed a step-by-step process through this period, building on those steps as we go on forward, leading up to this moment, and actually starting out with a preparation process, a detailed analytical process, doing studies and research, and finally putting a draft plan out there, which we posted back in February 2024, and have been receiving comments and making adjustments since that time. And following a public engagement process, really every step along the way, with a broad range of options and opportunities for public input throughout that process, and this is kind of a menu of the major approaches that we took during that process, beginning in the spring, summer of 2022, and ending up with a final round of open house presentations and input in March of 2024. Again, this is a very unique document identified as required of cities, counties, and towns in Virginia. This document fulfills that requirement. The current plan, the 2035 plan, was adopted in April 2015, so we're in the nine-year-plus range, so due for an update. A number of significant changes have occurred in Suffolk, so it's time for this update. And as the code spells out this purpose, it's important perhaps to remember that. Very general in nature is the idea behind this plan, a broad guide for future development, primarily focused on physical development and coordinating land use with the infrastructure requirements that come with it. Fortunately for Suffolk, this is an update of a plan and actually builds on about 25 years of a focused growth strategy. This is the fourth version of a plan that follows this approach, and this continues with that and builds on it going forward, focusing on specific growth area boundaries and reconsidering those on the schedule of the five-day, I mean, should be the five-year updates. And this is probably the best example of that continuing process. These guiding values that I've identified on the next two slides have been very, very consistent through that 25-year period. These are the issues or the values that really focus our attention on this plan and form the foundation of the plan, including being careful about the character and type of places that we create or preserve in the city, maintaining an efficient transportation network from the very beginning. This has been a challenge for a growing community, supporting economic development opportunities, looking for a balance of residential and job opportunities in the city. Again, perhaps even more important at this time around, focusing on the city's housing stock and striving for a diverse mix, diverse stock of housing, particularly in the affordable category. So we've got a number of recommendations in that area. Again, protecting what makes Suffolk so special, the natural, cultural, and historic assets of the city, very much a part of this plan, as well as earlier efforts, as I mentioned before, focusing on economic development opportunities, but also the agricultural heritage in the city. This plan makes a couple of specific recommendations in that area. And finally, realizing that we are part of a region. Suffolk isn't an island. So many of the challenges and opportunities that we face are part of being a part of the Hampton Roads region, again, no different this time around. Some of the recent steps that the community has undertaken in this plan adoption process, we posted a draft in June of June 19 and took the document to the planning commission in a public hearing on July 16. They recommended approval, and it updated this council on July 17, and learned that changes in the state code around advertisement for public hearings affected the items that were taken to the planning commission on July 16. So we brought it back to that body in a public hearing on August 20th, and then brought it to you all the following day in a public hearing on August 21st, and have been engaged since that time in doing some work on the master transportation plan recommendation, which you will hear about later this afternoon. So that's where we are as of today. I want to identify a couple of changes, as I mentioned earlier, fairly minor, but important to recognize those. These will be in the document that we proposed for your public hearing in November, and these were largely brought to us by the Suffolk Peninsula Community Partnership after that planning commission and city council meeting. And so we went through their comments and have made these recommended changes. A lot of these, again, are fairly minor, but important to identify, and I've identified the page numbers here and the actual change in language. The fourth item, for example, just a typo on our part, we needed to use a consistent number when we cite the public engagement process, the number of comments that we've received during that process. We actually added a project to our vision category of transportation projects. That's the Godwin Bridge expansion. You'll find that in a table on page 98 and on a map on page 99. So again, those changes, we want to be very transparent about what we're bringing forward, and so I've gone into this detail with you all this afternoon, and this will be reflected on the document that's posted, as well as that version that actually tracks all of the changes that we've made to this document over the process of doing this work. And finally, this is an additional change to one that we proposed to you all earlier on, and it again has to do with our recommendation to update the village plans and to be very, again, transparent and deliberate about the importance of the transportation corridors that affect the land use in these villages. So you will notice in the underlined language in red that we are again calling out the specific issue around transportation corridors and compatible land uses. We identify the corridors and the villages that are impacted. Again, just to be clear that this will be part of the scope of work when these village plans are updated. So that's where we are at this point, and that concludes my portion of the presentation. As I mentioned earlier, we're making progress on the transportation master plan, and you'll be hearing about that in just a minute. We are also expecting to hear next week from VDOT, which is reviewing this section of the plan as well. We just want to close that loop before we go to the public hearing. We do not expect any significant comments as a result of that review, and we'll continue to prepare for that hearing going forward. Again, that concludes my presentation, and I will stand by for any comments or questions that you all have.
Good afternoon. I'm Kirsten Tench, as mentioned, with VHB, and I'm supporting the city on the master transportation plan. So this master transportation plan came about as a recommendation coming out of the 24 Comprehensive Plan that was just discussed, and the goal of this master transportation plan is really to set the vision, what is the transportation needs of the city now and into the future. And it considers three main areas: land use, meeting the land use conditions of today, as well as the vision for the land use in 2045; improved mobility, improving mobility for all members that use the transportation system, that's pedestrians, bicyclists, passenger cars, freight, transit, all those elements are considered, and then promote sustainable growth of the city. So every city within Hampton Roads has some version of a transportation plan, and they vary in the amount of detail that is provided. The map up here is actually the one represented from the city of Chestbeak, and it's really a 2050 plan that shows what types of roads are throughout the city and really what the functional classification and the width of those roads, or the number of lanes that has that supports their land use plan. City of Virginia Beach has a chapter in their comprehensive plan, and they just use that as their overall transportation master plan. City of Portsmouth has a transportation master plan that is more robust, but it's from 2010. It's a stagnant document and really hasn't taken into account many of the changes or the foresight of what could potentially change within the city. And then the city of Hampton, as final example, once again, uses the comprehensive plan transportation chapter as their transportation master plan, and then incorporates a bike ped component to that plan. So the 2045 Comprehensive Plan that you'll be seeing and voting on in the November meeting has Chapter Four for the transportation component, and also has a component of the appendices that address the existing conditions. What are the existing conditions for all the transportation facilities? What types of roads are significant for statewide movement of people and goods? What are the volumes on the roads? How do they operate, whether they're congestion, not congested? Safety, where are your crashes occurring across the city? Pedestrian bicycle needs, what are they now? What are the needs for the future? And then finally, what is the freight network that is routed through the city? The next part of that plan then talks about what are the funded, what are the planned, and then what are the visionary projects that are needed by 2045? And then finally, what are the objectives and actions of that transportation plan? So all of those elements are included in the current version of the comprehensive plan that you'll be voting on next month. So the transportation master plan will then build on that Chapter Four and those appendices. It's really a vision of what the overall goal of the support the city would be. As mentioned, it does adjust the congestion, safety, and the connectivity, the mobility of people and goods throughout the city. It promotes the sustainable growth and overall mobility, and it considers all aspects of the transportation network. The main point of this transportation master plan is to be a living document. We want to review this and update it annually as part of the CIP project, so it continues to incorporate the deeds and as well as the planned and funded projects that will be coming in front of you each year as you consider the CIP. So that way, this will continue to be a living document and not be stagnant until the next time a comprehensive plan comes before you. And then finally, the mapping in here will outline a number of different projects that are being proposed now through 2045. These are conceptual in nature to give you, as well as the citizens of Suffolk, an idea of where the proposed improvements will be located throughout the city. And those, again, those improvements are the freight, passenger rail, transportation signal, signals, intersection improvements, interchanges, new alignments. All those different aspects are listed. And again, they are only meant to be conceptual. They are not setting alignment until future development of the projects are developed into the future. And so this is just an example of the type of information that'll be shown. There'll be an overall map that outlines the visionary projects out through 2045, and then we'll start defining those conceptual alignments of where those improvements would be. This happens to be the map that shows the King's Highway Bridge, as well as the Chuck and Duck Bypass that's from the village plan, as well as an improvement on King's Highway. So it'll give people who are looking at this transportation plan a closer look at the map, they can see more detail, and a general idea of what the goal of that project is. In addition to this, there will be a little paragraph on each of the projects that talks about why this project is important to the city of Suffolk. And that concludes my portion of this presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. That concludes all the presentation. Council, ask if you have any questions or comments now in regards to the transportation Councilman Johnson?
Are we going to have a copy of that plan to view before the 2045, before the public starts to ask questions? Will we have a copy? I mean, I don't see anything here that answers any of my questions.
That's a question for you. A copy of the draft?
Of the transportation plan, yeah, what we're going to be included in the 2045.
Let me expand on that just a little bit. So our vision is at this point, this will not be an official part of the comp plan. The comp plan already has Chapter Four in there that addresses all the things required. Our vision of this, this is going to become a standalone document. So essentially, we pull Chapter Four out, we've added to it, eventually we'll bring that back to council, you all can adopt it. But the idea is to keep it a living document, so each year as you update your CIP, we'll go back and add those projects back in, they'll go from visionary to funded or planned. And again, this becomes a living document. So yes, sir, I believe the intent is for you to see this prior to November, but I'm not sure at this point we really intend for this to be a document that's adopted by council on that night, because again, there's still some work to be done.
Okay. All right. I have a little problem with that, but the point is, I think that the public's going to have a real problem with that, because what they've asked us to come back with, and the whole document is a living, breathing thing, Robert, we all know that. This, it can change on a whim, it changed tomorrow if the weather changes, but I'm not sure that we weren't asking for a section in the comp plan that actually identified where we're heading road-wise.
All of that's in the comp plan, sir, every bit of it. So what's also important, and Kirsten talked about this a little bit, this does not set alignments, this is a vision. And again, it's a 30-year lookout vision. One of the things we cannot do, we kind of draw straight lines, and you'll notice a lot of those map lines are straight lines, they're from point A to point B. We don't try to really put an alignment in there, because if we go to that, it almost becomes an official map, and when you get to the point of doing that, we have essentially inversely condemned property, and we've tied people's hands and tell them that the city's taking your property, we're going to put a road there. That's not the case. This is a vision, and the idea is we work with property owners and developers as they bring plans in to figure out how to fit these roads through these properties. We don't tell them exactly where it has to go and how it has to fit. We give them the ability to work their plans around our vision for these roads. That's the way we've always done it, and again, otherwise, and I think the attorney can weigh in on this, we may get ourselves in pretty significant legal issue if we go to the point of trying to create an official map that shows these alignments set in stone.
Yep.
Yeah, I want to just kind of go back to the purpose of the comprehensive plan to Mr. Johnson as well. I mean, this is a broad document that addresses land use and growth areas. We typically don't get into a lot of detail with any municipal service in the plan, whether it's Parks and Rec or utilities. This sets that broad direction for growth and development and allows other departments to develop more detail with that guide in mind.
One more question. With the other cities that have this as part of their comp plan, and they have the chapters in there, and that's what they're actually using for their traffic plan, do, our document is going to be an individual traffic plan, I'm just trying to explain this to myself so I can explain it to the world. We're going to have a living, breathing document that's going to change on a monthly basis or yearly basis as we move through the traffic plan, correct?
That's the vision we adapt as we go forward.
And I do understand that, and I think that's a good thing, but I'm also, I don't know, I gotta digest this, I'm not quite, I thought we would end up having some kind of plan that would tell the public, yes, these are the things we are heading toward, this road has got to be improved, we know that moving forward, this road we know is not going to, we're going to put this bridge in, we're going to do this, 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 and this, and I'm just, I don't know.
And that's exactly what this plan does for you. All of that detail is in this plan.
Okay, but we won't have that before the comp plan is approved?
You've got the majority of it already in Chapter Four, and we're just adding some additional detail.
Okay.
Yeah, I think pages 98 and 99, it shows the map of the transportation plans and the list of transportation plans. What they have on there is a number of the visionary projects are not mapped, they are just, they're listed there with an asterisk that these are not included on the map, and those are now be mapped to give a little bit general idea of that vision in the transportation master plan. So that's the component that gets built upon as we go into the transportation master plan.
All right. Okay. All right, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Councilmember Mother Barlow?
I hate to, you know, expose my ignorance, but what is VHB?
We're a consulting firm, it stands for Van Ass hanging in Brussels, but we've been supporting the city for about 10 years on various traffic and transportation projects.
Okay, this was just my first experience of you being involved with the comprehensive planner, so I just...
Yeah, well, because we're not working on the comp plan, we are doing the master transportation plan.
So we brought an outside consultant in, again, Kirsten has worked for us, she's modest, it's probably more like 30 years she's been working for the city. We brought her in as an outside independent review, said, make sure we as staff are not overlooking something. That's what we said, review what everybody else has done in the region, and let's make sure we're in conformance. And again, I think what you're going to find, what we're presenting to you, has much more detail than nearly any other city around us.
I do, I have one other question. I know, and I don't have it in front of me, and I don't have it memorized, I'm sure that staff does, but I know that one of the concerns in the existing information that's in the comprehensive plan as it's been presented, is that the traffic and congestion numbers and studies were done, like during the pandemic, so that maybe they're not as up-to-date as they need to be. Am I right or wrong in that assessment?
It may depend on the source of that. Most of that information came from our regional partners, so some of that may have been done to the pandemic, through the pandemic, some of it was probably done prior to the pandemic, some of this has been post-pandemic, so this is all a mixture of that.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yep.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? If not, we've got a couple of comments before we go to the plan itself. In regards to the transportation plan, I mean, I'm a little bit like Councilman Johnson, I thought we'd see a little bit more specifically as to what we plan on doing and understand it's going to be referred to in the comprehensive plan. The transportation master plan, the way I look at it, the first bullet point you have is vision of the transportation needs of the future. To me, that is the transportation plan, all in one nutshell. So when we say needs of the future, my way of thinking is, needs of the future would be directly related to the growth that we are projecting within the comprehensive plan. So we've got a comprehensive plan, this is where the growth is projected, this is the type of growth that we're projecting, and then with that will be a transportation plan that speaks directly to the comprehensive plan as to, in this growth area with this type of activity, we will need this type of transportation to accommodate that, so we don't have the congestion. Does that sound about right?
Yes, sir, that is correct, and essentially, that's what pages 98 and 99, those maps are. But again, remember, this is a 30-year lookout, and conditions are constantly changing. What we see today is much different than what we saw just two years ago. So as each one of these projects comes before you, we require them to supply up-to-date latest studies, counts, and so forth, to make sure we're giving you the best information. And from that, some of the recommendations in this 30-year lookout may change. We may end up having to require a little more than what they got. I can tell you, we'll probably never require I can tell you, we'll probably never require any less than what's shown in this plan. But again, it's a vision. We've been working this vision for 25 years, essentially with the same information on a single map, and that's what everybody else does, and I believe that's kind of what the state law is asking us to do. It would be great if we could crystal ball and say exactly what's going to happen on each road in the next 30 years, we just don't have that ability. We've got to be able to react.
Right. No, I understand that, and a lot of it's predicated on funding, and a lot of it's predicated on, you know, the region, as to where the money is allocated, how and when to do what. But as long as the comprehensive plan is here, and our master transportation plan is going to say, kind of, in this growth area, we are anticipating that we're going to have to widen the road, put in this, do that, for that to come to fruition, without creating all these other issues as far as congestion and traffic and ensuring that it's safe, et cetera, et cetera. So from that standpoint, I mean, I wouldn't have a problem with it. Seems like the way to go, as long as the two go hand in hand, knowing that both of them are subject to change at any time, just like you said, the comp plan and the transportation plan. The comp plan might not, the comp plan may have to change strictly due to we can't accommodate what we have forecast, what our needs would be in the master transportation plan. So if someone chooses to invest in our city with a major development of some type that is allowed within our comp plan, they should be able to refer to the master transportation plan, somewhat similar to what we did on Route 10. I mean, we said, okay, you can do that, but we need two more lanes first.
That's right.
So yes, it works for this, but you have to understand that for that project to probably come to fruition, this needs to happen from a transportation standpoint. Either you foot the bill, or you sit there and wait for somebody else to foot the bill. And we can, not only can we rely on that, but the developers and those choosing to invest in our in our city can do the same thing. So I can see where they're coming together, I just, it would be better if we had it in front of us, but we don't. So as long as that's the concept, I mean, I understand it, and I think it's, it'll definitely suffice for what we want to do.
Well, Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
Tonight, this afternoon, what we want to do is bring you the opening initial show of what we're attempting to do. It wasn't envisioned that we'd have a complete document today, and I think I relayed that to all of you all. The key here, though, we keep forgetting, and Robert has said it twice, is that this is, and when he talks a living document, this is something that we want to, we talked about the comp plan, we talked about transportation, don't forget your CIP.
Right.
Because with the CIP, the transportation plan could change over the years. You'd be looking at long-term visionary, then it could be a midterm project that's in the CIP, because we know where funding's coming. So it all comes together as a whole, not all standing alone by itself. So I just want to make that point.
Okay. If there are no other questions in regards to the master transportation plan, does counsel have any questions concerning the comprehensive plan itself update in that presentation that they'd like to ask Keith about? Okay. Hearing none, the only, what I would like, the employment centers, you know, I know we've added some additional language in there that allows for more opportunities, and I'm specifically referring to residential. I didn't go to the Hampton Roads, State of Hampton Roads presentation last week, but I did read that the study determined that one of the challenges is going to be housing, without any question. That housing is going to remain a shortage, not just affordable housing, but they kind of, the way it was put in the article was, it really doesn't make any difference what kind of housing is, as long as you have a housing shortage, then you're going to have a shortage of affordable housing, because it's a matter of supply and demand. So if you have more demand and more housing stock, then that will bring housing to a lower price also. So I just want to make sure that the changes within the the comp plan, not only referring to the transportation, master transportation plan, but also in the employment centers and what have you, also have the verbiage in there that will encourage that as well.
It does. I think there's a good relationship between what the State of the Region Report said and what Suffolk is doing with this plan. I mean, providing opportunities for additional housing is a big part of what this plan update does. We provide, expanding the growth area boundary, and identify different types of housing to increase the housing supply, both in terms of the greenfield type, as well as the infill housing in existing growth areas like downtown and in North Suffolk. So I welcome that report calling attention to the need to increase housing supply, and this plan really makes that possible with the strategy that we've proposed.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions, comments? If not, thank you very much, Mr. Kennedy. We'll move on to our next topic, which is the City of Suffolk Water Service Line Program Update. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Paul Vitale, Director of Public Utilities will provide the update on the water service line.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager. This presentation is focused on a very specific portion of our water distribution system, and actually portions of the water distribution nationwide. This is really a nationwide issue that will also impact Suffolk. It's really, over the last few years, had a focus, and it's based on EPA regulations, which I'm going to discuss, and really, in particular, it talks about service lines, water service lines that are primarily constructed of lead pipe. So where am I going to go with this presentation? It's a brief roadmap, just to show you what I'm going to talk about this afternoon. We're going to talk a little bit about what the water service line program is, we're going to talk about water service line basics, and that's important, because that is what this whole program focuses on. We're going to talk in that, in a particular slide, about how water service line is configured. We're going to talk about, importantly, about the regulatory basis for this program, because that's what's requiring this. We wouldn't be doing some of this if there weren't any regulations that are out there, and then have also been recently come down the pipe, actually last week. We're going to talk about Suffolk water quality with respect to water service lines, because that's important. And then I'm going to talk briefly about some elements of the program regulatory requirements and its implementation. That's a very broad subject, I'm just going to hit on some very high topics and move along with that. And then last thing, I'm going to talk about impacts of this program to our staffing, and then also to funding of the program. So what is this program? It's, in essence, it's the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, it's a nationwide required program that to address lead water service lines and issues related to those lead water service lines. It's really based on two phases of EPA regulations, the second phase of which just we received last week, knew this was coming, we were kind of hoping we were going to stick in the first phase, which wouldn't require some of the replacements we're going to talk about, but it is two phases of EPA regulations. So generally, the program has got some elements I'm going to touch on here. One of the elements that we've worked on over the last few years is a water service line inventory. I'm going to get into this a little bit more detail in a couple of other slides, but this is where we took available records that we have to look at the materials of construction of the water service lines, to where we can try to figure out how many water lead lines we have, how many galvanized lines we have, how many unknowns we have, all based on the records that we have, not on knowledge of, over the history of where people can tell me where they are, it's based on the records that we actually have in hand. So then, coming out of that inventory, that phase of regulations requires that we do public notifications, it's a mailer, I'm going to talk about that as well, in three categories of service lines, water service lines, those constructed of lead, those of galvanized steel pipe, which the EPA would also require replacement, I'm going to talk about that, and then those that are unknown. Continuing on with the program general elements, they're they're going to require increased water distribution sampling within the system. We do quite a bit of sampling right now to check water quality in all areas of our distribution system throughout the city and report on that. A lot of those results are in the city's water quality report that's required to come out every year, that's available online. But the key here to this one program element that really has come into focus more over the last few months, and in particular, last week, is this required replacement of all lead what's, lead water service lines and galvanized steel lines that are located downstream of lead service lines. So let's talk a little bit about water service line basics, because that is the focus of these EPA regulations. A water service line is the smaller diameter pipe that connects the larger water main in the street to a customer's plumbing system. These water service lines can be constructed of a variety of different materials of construction. Think of copper, think of different plastics, PVC, polyvinyl chloride, think of PEX, which is a relatively newcomer to the to the pipe community, we see a lot of that, galvanized steel, and then, of course, lead. So let me stop on the lead real quick. You might ask, as we move through this, well, why would a service line be even constructed of lead? So back in 19, early 1900s to about the mid 1900s, lead was a material that was used for water service lines primarily for two reasons. It's very malleable, so it's bendable, was able to be bent into various different arcs to to get to the meter box, and it's also resistant, very resistant to corrosion in the soil. Bury the piece of lead pipe in there, I'll come back in 300 years, and it'll still be there. Water service lines have a publicly owned section, and then also a customer-owned section. And to that point, I think a diagram is useful that I pulled up. So focus on the yellow box that's in the middle, roughly bottom middle of this diagram. You can't see what it says, but it says meter box, that would be where our water meters contained. So if you look to the right, where it's, I labeled it public space, and at the left, private property, generally how this lays out is the piece that's between the water service line, that's between the water main and the meter, would be the publicly owned section, that's one that's owned and maintained by the city, and then downstream from the meter box all the way to the house plumbing would be the customer or the privately owned section of the water service line. These regulations address both sections of the of the service line. So you might be asking, well, what's the basis for this? It's regulatory driven by the EPA. If you recall, touch very briefly what happened in 2014, 2016 timeframe, if you recall, in Flint, Michigan, you might have heard, there were water quality issues. These water quality issues, what happened there was they switched source waters, the source waters were, the chemistry was different, and when they switched those source waters, it allowed for some lead release into the drinking water, which the EPA then clamped down and resulted in more stringent regulations that we're dealing with nationwide. So earlier, I talked about the different phases of these regulations. Phase one of the lead service line regulation was issued in 2021. Basic components of that are what we've been dealing with, creating the water service line inventory, which we've done, we've worked through that with our staff, and also with the assistance of a consultant. It requires, based on the water service line inventory, public notifications, which we're going to talk about, in the mail. That phase of regulations only required lead service line replacements if the lead levels in the water exceeded certain levels in drinking water. Personally, I was hoping that those, that the regulations were going to end at phase one, because I'm going to talk about in a minute here about our water quality, we have not had any lead exceedances in our system. So that would not have required us to replace these lead service lines under phase one of the regulations. Phase two, the regulations have been issued, they've come out in October, actually last week. Two main elements there that I'll talk about very briefly is to verify the service line inventory, and you're going to see what I'm going to, what I mean about that in a second when you see some of the statistics from our inventory. Basically, what that's going to require is us to go out and do some field investigations, do some statistical analysis of the service lines, to really whittle down that inventory to make sure that we're confident, or that we know where the lead's at, where the galvanized is, and where our unknowns are. But more importantly, what it does is it does require replacement of all lead service lines by the year 2037. Suffolk drinking water quality, Suffolk drinking water meets all EPA drinking water standards. We do not have any lead exceedances. Primarily, one of the reasons for that is, is the EPA, back in the 1990s, mandated what's called the Lead and Copper Corrosion Control Program, which requires all utility providers to use a corrosion inhibitor, it's a chemical, in the water treatment process. We do that. And what it does is it prevents the release of any lead or copper coming out of a copper line into the drinking water. This chemical is fed both at our G. Robert House Water Treatment Plant up in Chukatuck, and then also at the Lake Kilby Plant that's owned by the city of Portsmouth. They both feed that. So that's what prevents us from having lead exceedances. So talk a little bit on some of the high points of the program regulatory requirements and how we implement that. So we've completed the inventory, I'm going to show you a slide here in a second about the results of that inventory. So over the next couple of years, we're going to be involved in making verifications, both field verifications, meaning we're going to go ahead and look in areas that we have unknowns, which are quite a few, based on our records. We might have to do some potholing, some digging, do some statistical analysis based on certain areas, the common housing stock, the year the house was was built, to determine whether we really, if that if that service line is unknown or not. It requires service line replacements, both the public and the private portions, not just the public portion. This regulation requires, on the private side, that we offer to replace a private water service line, we don't have to pay for it, the city doesn't have to pay for it, but our staff has to be involved in the coordination in helping the resident get a contract to replace that service line, if the customer agrees to have it replaced. There's increased school sampling coordination, there's water distribution system sampling changes, primarily, it's an increased number of sampling points within the system. I think right now, we've got 30-something points across the city. I believe that would bump up based on the new regulations, haven't read through all the new regulations, but probably about 60, so about double our sampling points. Also would require us to manager, manage what I'll call disturbances in service lines, and what I mean by that is, is we, if we go ahead and cut a service line, they consider that a disturbance. If I go ahead and somebody calls, and we have to repair a service line, and I disturb the line, supposedly, research has shown that that jostling of the line might release some of the material in the pipeline, so we would have to go ahead and provide for a few months a water pitcher to the customer, so that they could filter their water if there was a disturbance in that service line. So that's part of these new regulations as well. And then it also provides for required annual public notification. So if you have an unknown service line, until we know exactly what that service line is, we would have to send out these these annual notifications. So the Suffolk inventory and notifications, when you look at this, you're going to think, well, we must not have a problem, because I'm showing a slide that says lead service line zero, galvanized requiring replacement 23, and unknown 12,334. The key on this slide is based on available records. We've had many discussions with staff that have been all over the city in their careers that, for the most part, can tell us, including one sitting at your dais, that where these lead lines are. The issue with that is, is that does not fall into the rules I call of engagement with the EPA. They have to have something that I can point back to and that I can document. Well, that's difficult when you're going back to the 1950s and the 1960s. So one of the things that we're going to be concentrating over the next year is to take those 12,000 unknowns and go, and to the best of our ability, whittle them down to where we can go ahead and show it's copper or plastic, so it can fall off the inventory, and then we can focus on the areas that we actually believe do have lead in the in the service line lineup. So what what this results in, the requirements, is that we have to mail out notification letters, and that, our inventory was due October 16th, so that was, we actually submitted it in advance to make sure the whole software system worked with the state, and that was submitted. So we got that done by the regulatory deadline. We need to mail out notification letters, so in essence, we're going to be mailing out 12,000 letters. So we're going to talk about that in this slide. I know you can't read this, but what I'm intending to demonstrate on this slide is the notification letter that's going to go out. There's a required section of the notification letter that's mandated by the Virginia Department of Health, that is the text that you see on the right-hand side of this slide. Bare minimum requirements is that we would just have to send out that letter. The concern there was, is it talks about different health effects of lead in water, and it would lead, potentially lead a resident to believe that there's an issue with lead exceedances in our water, which is, which there's not. So what we've chosen to do is, on the left-hand side, is, this is going to be one, one page, one side, the other page, the mandated side, is to put some, I think there are six frequently asked questions. So I tried to word this, to give this some context, why are we doing this, what's a lead service line, where can I call, where can I go for some more information? So when you get this letter in the mail, they just don't see the VDH template on the other side. So that's what we've chosen to do. So those are the letters that would be mailed out November 8. So those are the letters that would be mailed out November 8th. So lastly, this, this is a big program. It's not just Suffolk, it's across the nation. This program did some estimates over the last few weeks, just to replace some of the lines that we believe to be in the system. And if you had to, if I were asked how many lines, actual lead service lines, I would think were in our system, I'm going to say about 3,000 to 4,000 versus the 12,000, maybe a little bit less than that. But that program would add about 25 million to 30 million to the 10-year CIP. So that's a, that's a, that's a considerable amount. We're exploring with our consultant, the availability of grant funding. The regulations are not exactly aligned with a lot of federal available money right now. There is grant funding out there, so we just sat in on a conference call a couple of weeks ago with our consultant to learn about those grant funding opportunities. Does involve increased staff time to coordinate these programs and to track the inventory verifications as we do that over the next year or two. And in order to augment our staff, we have been using some consultants to really assist our staff with this and to get, help us understand some of these ongoing regulations or the current regulations. So said a lot there. With that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Rattell. Council, questions or comments? Councilman Fawcett?
Paul, thank you very much. You really laid this thing out. You know, you hit on something that gets me here back in one of the slides is, we talk about the water system between the private home and the actual meter box where the water flows to them. If I'm understanding you, just clarifying, that we would not replace the private line at the cost of the city if they want to have that line replaced? Then we kind of help them, guide them to get that water replaced, that water line replaced?
That would, yes, that would mirror my understanding of the regulations. We are not required to pay for that. Where this becomes a challenge is the coordination of this. You know, I replace the public side, I'd like to replace the private side at the same time, but yes.
Now, my question is, if they don't elect to do that, then, you know, what's the potential of their copper or their lead-based line, rather, excuse, not copper, but lead-based line contaminating us in the system? I mean, there's no backflow to that, so we don't have an issue there.
No, it would not backflow into our system. The, the way the regulation is set up, as I understand it right now, it's either three or four attempts. We advise a homeowner, we replace the lead service line. We recommend that you replace your line, whether it's lead or galvanized. And the reason for the galvanized, let me explain that real quick, is their research has shown that when, allegedly, when you release lead upstream of galvanized, the galvanized captures it. So that's why they want that replaced. So under the regulations, we are to ask the resident, we recommend that you replace this line, we're going to help you coordinate it, we're not going to pay for it. If they say no, we have to ask them two more times or three more times, whatever the number is. I have to document that in my inventory system. If they still say no, it doesn't count for us as a full replacement, but there's nothing more I can do. I can't force them to replace the private plumbing.
I mean, the key would be how far from the meter box back to the resident would be needing to be replaced because you've got to figure out how far back does that, that lead-based line go? And that could be quite an exhausting, expensive proposition.
Well, you're, you're on it. I mean, where this, where the rubber meets the road on this, and actually there are various different interpretations, councilman, on this right now. I've been in a meeting where VDH has said you need to replace it five feet from the building foundation. But I've also heard that they require you to actually tie into either under the crawl space, which is a whole different, you know, now we're really getting into somebody's private area. But you're right. I mean, there are areas in the downtown area where have very short runs of service lines and other areas that might have a little bit longer runs of service line. The, the other thing that I want to mention, I mentioned talking with staff. We got ahead of it. We, we actually were talking with staff about this in 2019 and created a map of where we believe these lines are. I go to every one of our staff members that it's involved either in construction, our operations manager, city manager, not, I think in only in one case, on the private side, can anybody recall seeing when we replace a meter, a lead line. On the public side, yes. We, we know we've got them when we've run into them in our various construction activities. But again, they've run into a lot of galvanized lines. And again, those are, those are part of this program.
Well, first off, I want to say, hey, you know, Suffolk is in a good place when it comes to the quality of our drinking water, there's no question about it. We've gone to other places and drank the water and we revert back to, oh, Suffolk's got a pretty good drinking water system. I mean, I think we've got so many things in play to help filtrate and make sure the quality of water is, is coming to the customer is top-notch. Let's see, I had one other question here. On the letters that are going out, I gotta, I gotta tell you, it just throws a red flag up to me that when these go out, the average person trying to interpret these, well, do I have lead on my house or how do I not know that? I mean, the phone could start ringing. So you're going to have to figure out how you're going to set down the pandemonium that they have lead or galvanized and, oh my gosh, what do I do? So I expect you're going to get a bunch of those calls, even though I know the letter is very nicely put together, I just think that that's going to happen. I mean, it's, whoever's on the other end of that phone at Public Utility is going to catch the devil on the time this thing hits. So I feel like that, you need to be gamed up for that real quick, like. And you know, the feds put this thing out and they talked about, I seen a couple of things going on at the fed level that says, hey, you know, we're going to fix this lead-based galvanized problem throughout the country. You know, I like that statement, but where is the funding coming from that's going to do this? Because we're mandated, we're going to have to come up with some funding if you don't have that funding in play in order to be able to make these adjustments. So I see this being, I know you've got it corralled and I know you, you guys are doing a great job, Utility does great work. But I, I just see some of those things that I just threw out at you to be issues.
And I, I appreciate that. We've been discussing with staff who's got the crystal ball of how many phone calls we're going to get. And we were going to do a little educational session with our customer service staff, was where the phone calls are initially going to go. If they can't answer them, they're going to have to come up to us to, to where we can answer more specific questions. We tried to cover some of the stuff in the FAQ sheet, I try to keep it fairly brief. Some people may ask to have theirs verified, which we can, depending upon staff availability, we can assist with that. So yes, I, I agree with you.
So, you know, I had another, one other question, but it's kind of taking a walk on me. But I, I think you're hitting the nail on the head here. I just think the problem's going to be is the identification that's going to be the issue. And the cost of this thing could get a little bit really up there. I mean, it just really depends on how much you guys really do find out there in your surveillance, you know, checking all these systems. So I just, I hope that we're in better shape than what we think, but we have a lot of old areas of housing and that could be, that could be problematic a little bit. And we'll see where it goes, but I appreciate what you've said today and you've covered it. And is it going, any of this going to be on our website, city page?
We actually, thank you, actually forgot to cover that. We are required, because of the number of residents that we serve, to have this, the inventory available on a website. So we have been involved with a consultant. The website is not live yet. It's actually, it's pretty robust, it's pretty nice. It, it shows you're able to go ahead and search and essentially see, you know, if you're non-lead or you're unknown or you're galvanized requiring replacement. And of course, that will change as we move through this next year or two, as we really dig down and to try to make the verifications on the inventory. But the website has got some FAQs on it, some frequently asked questions that we've edited to make them, make it fit more to Suffolk. That was, we worked with a consultant on that, so yes, this will be available on a website. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, Paul. And I, really the same question that Councilmember Fawcett had. I'm hoping that we have some sort of a dedicated person that will be able to answer phone calls because they're going to be coming in, but I like the fact that you've got multiple ways for people to get in touch. But I just know, you know, sometimes getting through the city phone maze is a challenge, so I just, I just want to reiterate, I hope we're prepared because I think you send a letter like this out and people are going to not read it and just react. And I know you've thought of that, but I just hope we can find the resources to have staff to be able to fill some of these phone calls and to have the website as up to date as possible as well. So just wanted to reiterate that.
Councilman Bennett.
Thank you, sir. Paul, just a couple of comments on the, how are you trying to detect where those areas are where you might have lead in, in the lines? And to go along with that, will it be looked at in neighborhoods that, within a certain age bracket of, of the area? How does that work?
Yes, great, great question. So I'm going to take an example. Say you have a subdivision that was built in the 1970s. So one of the key dates I really didn't touch on here is 1986. If I could go back and see a Suffolk had a building code that said thou shalt not use lead in 1972, that would take a bunch of this off, off the plate. Really can't find anything with that right now, so basically what it reverts back to is the National Building Code of 1986 when it was prohibited. So the reason I'm bringing up the 1970s, so say you have a subdivision's built in the 1970s. In theory, the EPA would say, well, you don't know for sure because you can't show me that you prohibited lead. So we would take a subdivision like that, built in the 1970s, and the first thing we would do, and we've done a lot of this already, we would pull up our record drawings that are all scanned into our system. When those record drawings come up, if on those record drawings from the construction of that subdivision, show me the materials of construction for that water service line, I'm good. I'm going to take that whole subdivision and say it's non, you know, it's non-lead. That's great. Where it gets tricky, 1970s, I'm pretty sure in 1970 Suffolk was not putting lead service lines in the ground, but I got to have something that's going to show me that. So now what it goes back to, kind of as a follow-on to your question, councilman, so now we're going to work with our consultant. We're going to take a common neighborhood that was built in the 1970s and they're going to tell me based on 200 homes what a statistically significant sampling number is. That may be 20. We may have to go out then and do some digging around the meter box to look at both sides of the meter box. And then based on those results, if they come back as those field investigations is non-lead, VDH, the Virginia Department of Health, will allow us to do that statistical analysis and say, because of the common age and the build type of that house, we can now say those are not lead. But as you can see, that, that's a, that's an effort. But hopefully I've answered your question.
You did. Very well. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Councilman Johnson.
And Leroy's question was mine as well, because if it was a significant date that mattered to people, and I guess my, but I'll go back to my second question. 13 years, 13 years, this is all going to be corrected, right? That's what they're telling us. Is there any way they're going to maintain that?
Versus like, give us a...
Stretch it to another 15 or whatever.
It would be nice for them to stretch that out.
It's a significant, fairly quickly.
Yes.
And with the grant funding not even being, that's being talked about, but it hasn't been figured out yet.
There's some out there right now under the, what's called the bill by, by partisan infrastructure law that's out there, that we're looking at right now, that's applying for. It's not grant money like we had with the ARPA where you actually receive the money, it's a reimbursement type of a grant, so we would actually have to go ahead and spend the money to replace the service line and then follow the rules of that grant to be, get reimbursed for that. So that's a, that's an effort. But we are looking hard at the grant funding that's available.
And we have the personnel to do all of this, or we will have?
We need to work on that.
Just, just, it's a lot to undertake.
It, it's a, yes.
It's pretty significant.
Yes.
And as far as the CIP goes, when will it start to actually affect our CIP?
The way I've plugged this in right now for the draft that, that I have submitted is I've started actually to maybe take an area, for example, maybe a, an older section of downtown and to do a test program where we know, where our staff can come to me and say, yep, I've seen lead in the ground there, and try to get on board with the contractor to start replacing some of these lines, just to see how this rolls, to see the costs and to roll with that. So I have plugged that in the CIP for even starting next year. The real effort here too, other than the replacements, which is the big deal, is trying to get that whittled down with as much information as we can get out of our record system, which we've already done a lot of work with, but dig deeper. I don't know else to say it.
Paul, we have ultimate faith. We, we know we've got good people here and we can handle this, but it is, thank you for bringing it to us.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Richter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Paul, just having come back from the conference for the Virginia Municipal League, one of the sessions that I attended was on this exact subject, the lead and the PFAS and the PPPS mandates that are coming down. So I very much, I, I sat there and was very proud and very confident, you know, from having been also a member on the Board of the Western Tidewater Water Authority, how very much on top of this that the city of Suffolk is. So your department and you were to be congratulated for that. With that in mind, with this letter that is going out, are we allowed, or are you allowed to, as part of a cover letter, to talk of, you know, in general terms about our water quality and the fact that we've never had a lead, you know, just to try to dampen, because I agree with the other council people, if, if I just opened up this letter and started reading it and kept seeing the word lead, 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 I would probably panic a little bit. So can we do that to perhaps dampen it?
So to answer your question is yes, we've already developed that. That's the first part of that letter. I don't think I can back up with this.
Is that the part we can't read?
Oh, I can. Okay. It's part you can't see. So on the left-hand side of this, what we've created is a six FAQs and I'm just reading. What's a water service line? Why would a water service line need lead? Does the city test its drinking water for lead and ask to answer this question? It means all regular questions, you can actually go to the water plant and report the type of lead and get better. What are the health effects of lead in drinking water? That flips to the other side in the letter, which is the VDH required portion of it. Why would my watered service line potentially be led if the house was built after the mid-1990s? I explained that. You know, what are the next steps in, when we talk about the verifications that we have to do in the field? So that was our...
That's the intent of that?
That was the intent of that, yes.
Okay.
Because we were concerned about sending out the VDH template. Like you said, you'd open that letter and say, oh, I got lead in my water without any context to the program.
Okay. All right. I'm glad to hear that. The other question that I have is, going back to a comment that you made or was in here about lead soldered copper lines. When did they stop putting lead in the solder that the average plumber used to join two copper pieces?
Don't hold me to it, but I believe it was the 1986 edition of the building code that, that I referenced before.
So a lot of houses that are potentially, that had any kind of plumbing work done prior to 1986?
They could, they could. The interior...
Could have that.
I'm sorry.
Could potentially have used lead-based solder to, to do the copper joints.
Yes, actually a home could have two things inside of it, but those are not part of this program, they're not part of the regulations. You could have lead solder on copper pipe. You could also have a plumbing fixture that back, right now, well, brass used to have a more significant lead content to it than it does now. Do you, you go buy a plumbing fixture at Home Depot or Lowe's, it's going to say lead-free because there's no lead in the brass. But those things are not part of this regulation. But yes, there, there's no requirement for us to replace plumbing inside of somebody's home.
Well, I understand it wouldn't be for the city, but is that a trickle-down thing that would ultimately affect a homeowner? And how, how would they know?
You would have to hire a plumber to come out and inspect your plumbing. They do make lead test kits, I believe they're available at Home Depot. I believe they're available at Home Depot where you could actually test the lead solder on some of these, you know, the copper piping. And it would tell you if it was lead or not. It's like a little test strip type thing.
And I'm a little bit like Councilman Johnson. It's hard enough to find a plumber to come in and fix your toilet. And if all these houses, all of a sudden, they're going to need a bunch of plumbing work, there are going to be some mighty busy plumbers.
Well, the, the point you make too also extends to the water service line replacements. It's a burden on the contracting community just to go ahead and find, to get some contractors that are going to be able to make this thing happen by, in 10 years.
All right. Thank you. And thank you for being on.
Yes.
Mr. Manager.
Yeah, real quickly to follow up on a couple of Paul's comments is we'll get you copies of the letters that are going out. So you each have a copy of the letters so you know what it's going to say or it does say. Secondarily is on the water testing, of course, we've not had any exceedance in our system. But we do a lot of testing and it's tested, the samples are taken at the tap internally. So it's already gone through the plumbing of a house. So anything that's out there that may have it, we've already shown in our testing, which is geared around some of our older areas, that we do not have a major lead issue. We do have some lead lines out there, but it's water quality is, as Paul keeps telling you, it's been no exceedance. And I guess we all thank Flint, Michigan.
I do appreciate your clarification on the sample. For the lead sampling, yes, that comes out of the tap. We do the 30 distribution points. We also check for lead, but we also check for other things in that. Yes, thank you.
Councilman Richter.
Yeah, going back to your point, Mr. City Manager, I can attest to that because my house was built in 1926. So I have had my tap, water that comes out of my tap tested specifically for lead. And it's, you know, despite the age of my house, it was literally nonexistent. So it's a good thing to note.
Yeah.
Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, Mr. Patel, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
And we'll move to our final item for this afternoon, the Go Virginia Workforce Development Plan Overview. Mr. Manager.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, Terry Smith, Senior Development Business Manager, will provide the overview. Terry?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, Mr. Manager. Thank you for having me here today. We wanted to give you all a little bit of information about some work we're doing in economic development that we think is interesting and really important. So we're working on a grant. The name of this workforce development grant is the Western Tidewater Megatronics Workforce Development Planning Grant. I'll give you a little bit of information, of course, about the grant itself as where is the grant came from in the next couple of slides. Just first off, the dollar amount for this grant is $100,000 with an equal match from the municipalities and partners. The municipalities include us, the City of Suffolk. We also invited Isle of Wight as well as Franklin and Southampton County. We're including Camp Community College to be the holder of this grant. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. And the grant source is from the state and it's from Go Virginia. In the next slide, I'll give you some information about Go Virginia. So Go Virginia, maybe you're aware or a refresher if you already are, is a state initiative. It consists of a consortium of businesses together with state officials. And their goal is to provide grant funding to support regional activities to spur development. Their goal is to support incentives. Their goal is to, as I mentioned, look for regional collaboration. And they want to provide grants in the form of incentives so that businesses will work together with their state officials to attract more business. In Virginia, Go Virginia divided the state into nine different regions. Our region, City of Suffolk, is in Region Five. If you think about Region Five, we're very similar to the Virginia Beach MSA, the Metropolitan Statistical Area, which is our census area. Mr. Kennedy mentioned that in his remarks as well. They're not exactly the same, but they're very close. And the numbers in Region Five through Go Virginia are very close to the Virginia Beach MSA. So for example, in Region Five, there's a population of 1.7 million people with a workforce of just under 800,000. Region Five's focus is on advanced manufacturing, logistics, shipbuilding, as you would imagine, life sciences, unmanned systems, aerospace, and so forth. Our region is governed by a group called Hampton Roads Executive Roundtable. You've probably heard of them or have worked with them. They've gone through a couple of different incarnations. This group has been around for about 10 years. They've kind of gotten more active in the last six years or so. Their grant funding really focuses on workforce development, site development, and supporting smaller clusters or startups. We'll dig into the grant a little bit. So this grant is a workforce development research study and it's focusing on Megatronics. Megatronics is kind of a catchy word right now. It can mean different things to different people. I wanted to give you all really what the definition was so you know what we're talking about. So Megatronics is, it merges principles from mechanical engineering, electronics, computer science, control engineering in order to focus on mechanical devices with electronic controls. So really, anything mechanical, right? So that sounds like a lot of different things. But as you think about the industrial workplace in Suffolk, really, that's almost everybody in some capacity has their hands in some way in Megatronics. If you think about Megatronic jobs specifically, they could be jobs such as mechanics, CNC operators, people in the trades, chemical technicians, process controls, hydraulic systems, instrumentation operators, logic control systems, and robotics. So again, in Suffolk for sure, we have companies who have actual robotics and advanced robots in place. But we also have, as I mentioned, people who really work in the mechanical field. So as I talked to you about this study, think about the industrial setting, which could be a logistics distribution warehouse. It could be in an advanced manufacturing setting, food and beverage setting, any industrial setting such as this. I think that this grant could apply. So a little bit of history, 2022, 2023, we wrote this grant, we submitted it. We were awarded the grant this year, 2024. We included Camp Community College, as I mentioned, to be the holder of this, of this grant. Our goal with this grant is, as it's a planning grant, is to go out and research what skill gaps there are in Megatronics. So we want to learn, we want to talk to our companies in the municipalities and talk to them and learn about really what kind of training is missing as companies are looking to hire people with these skill sets. So why are we doing this? We're doing this for several reasons. For sure, there's already been different types of workforce training in place and they'll, will continue to be throughout Suffolk in our region. This was in a direct response to a change of our times and our scenery, if you will. During the pandemic, prior to, during, post-pandemic, the Great Resignation. Of course, we saw a changing labor workforce. We were hearing from our companies about their difficulty with placing certain kinds of employees or certain kinds of skills as well. It's in response to a growth in industrial companies throughout Suffolk, a growth in logistics, as well as advanced manufacturing, food and beverage processing, and so forth. It's also in response to just the advance of advanced technology that's out there. We know companies are looking at more high-tech, interesting technology to get put into place in order to enhance their operations. And as they look at these technologies, they know that they need people to be able to procure these items, to operate these items, and to eventually always be able to repair these items too. What we want to do with this research is we want to target the worker who is anywhere from, for example, an entry-level worker walking into a logistics space for the first time, who could use some extra skills and training, on up to even perhaps a mid-level worker who's looking to get upscaled, who's looking to get some more training, and hopefully be able to move up through the hierarchy of their company. The company that we hired as part of, or the group that we hired as part of this grant to help us with this process is VCU's Center for Public Policy. So we in Suffolk, Isle of Wight, and Franklin, working with Camp Community College, hired VCU to help us do the study so that they can help design what the research will look like. They can help us collect the information, put it together in a meaningful way, and collate all of the information ultimately at the end of the planning grant period. So we've just kicked this off just recently. We have formed an advisory committee. That committee consists of workforce partners, academia, some business people to help guide the process. We've also already gone out and culled the communities and we've gotten buy-in from companies who've said, yes, we're very interested. We want to help you, tell us what we can do. We've had these difficulties placing individuals, so we want to partner. So that group right now is just over 80 companies who have agreed to provide us some information towards this research. The research is going to consist of surveys, which will go out to people to be able to fill out to answer specific questions about what the skill gaps are. It'll also consist of in-person interviews, over-the-phone interviews, really going out and meeting with the companies directly as well. It will consist of focus groups. And it will also consist of existing research because there's already some data out there too. So other than the obvious, why are we doing this to support the businesses? We also really want to support the employees. As we think about these people in these jobs, from 2018 to 2023 in Suffolk, those, just those years, we had almost 3,500 new jobs in industrial settings. So that's warehousing, distribution, advanced manufacturing, processing. It's a lot of people. So we want to create an environment where people feel more valued, where they have a stronger quality of life. And that will in turn support retainment at those companies. We also believe that with successful training programs, that will ultimately attract more companies to Suffolk in our region because they'll see that the existing labor pool is enhanced with really good training mechanisms. And as I mentioned too, we want to provide pathways for entry-level trades and upscaling avenues for those existing employees. The next steps, where we are now, is the surveys started going out last week. They'll continue to go out in the next couple of weeks. As I mentioned, this is a planning grant. So what that means is the, the grant money that we were given was only to support the research portion. This is set to wrap up April of next year. We'll gather the data, we'll analyze the data. And ultimately, we hope to go back to Go Virginia or another applicable agency, ask for more support. And that would be for a Phase Two, which would be to implement whatever the training is going to look like. So with Camp being the holder of this, Camp, as you know, has campuses in Suffolk, in Isle of Wight County, in Franklin. But also what's really interesting is they are, they also have the new Workforce Trades and Innovation Center, of course, on Carolina Road, which has a hopeful opening date of next summer. So the timing for that could be interesting as well. With that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Terry. Council, questions, comments? Councilman Richter.
Thank you, and thank you for that presentation. Is this working in conjunction with or overlapping the Hampton Roads Workforce Development Council? Because a lot of what I'm seeing in here match a lot of their goals. And one of the things that came out of a presentation that I did with them is there's a lot of competing different entities with the same goal of workforce development and providing skilled workforce to not only the trades but other industries as well. That a lot of times people don't really know which way to go. So it is, are they, is this Go Virginia any way affiliated with Hampton Roads Workforce Development Council?
So there's a lot of agencies who are doing this kind of work that's similar. And Hampton Roads Workforce Council is on our advisory council. So they are part of this work. Specifically, this grant is focusing on Megatronics. So that's what sets this one apart. I don't know if there's been this kind of research that's been really robust with that kind of focus.
Okay, I just like I said, I hate to, since dollars are limited, I hate to see, you know, two organizations trying to accomplish the same thing and, and not working in conjunction with each other. So thank you.
Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you, Mayor. I thank you, Terry, for this briefing. I got to tell you, this is a good lift here. This is a fantastic project for, for just the amount of the money that could be available than futuristic money because the Megatronics world is, is where it's at. I mean, things are going more automated with robotics and things of that nature. We see that with Amazon and some of the other warehouses that come online that are going to be going pretty much in the Megatronic world. To get 80 participants to buy in is mega, that's beautiful. That's, that's a great thing that I see coming in the right direction. So I would say, keep breaking this down and busting into it. And this is going to help maybe some folks to be able to get training and things of that nature that we need in the marketplace to do these type of jobs that are very difficult. And without that training, unless you've gotten training somewhere, this Megatronics world is going to be difficult. So I think this is a very good step in the direction for retention or even employment down the line. I know it's in the early stages, but keep going. Keep pushing this thing because this could turn out to be something very valuable to the surrounding cities, not just Suffolk. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Fantastic stuff. This is what I look for right here. This is the world we're moving into. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Council, any other questions or comments? Ms. Smith, a quick question for you. Did I hear you right in saying that we have created 3,500 new job opportunities in Suffolk? Or was this in the region?
That was in Suffolk. I added up 2018 through 2023. So it doesn't include this calendar year currently. I just wanted to pick a span that shows you the tremendous growth just recently.
That's a pretty impressive number considering it's through 23 and doesn't take into consideration everything that we have in the pipeline. But workforce development, it's right up there with affordable housing. I mean, I don't think there's an employer you can speak to. And when you ask him what their challenges are, that in the top three is not the ability to hire competent employees. So workforce development, especially going along with what we've got working with Paul D. Camp and hopefully some other initiatives, is just going to be awesome. Now, as far as the grants themselves, how often are these available? Are these annual grants?
Yes, sir.
Or continues, just annually?
Yes, sir.
And I assume the money's going to fluctuate-
Yes, sir.
-from one year to the next?
Yes, sir, depending on the General Assembly.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, that concludes our work session. We do have need for a closed session. Madam Clerk, will you please present the motion for consideration?
Item number one, pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-371188 and A1, consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the legal advice of such counsel in the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment and the assignment, appointment, and performance of specific public officers or appointees, specifically the appointments as shown on the attached list, for vacancies or term expirations for the Downtown Advisory Committee, the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, the Historic Landmarks Commission, the Human Services Advisory Board, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, Paul D. Camp Community College Board, the Sister Cities Commission, Southside Network Authority, Suffolk Clean Community- Southside Network Authority, Suffolk Clean Community Commission, Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority, Tidewater Youth Services Commission, and the Western Tidewater Regional Jail Board. And item number two, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A29, the discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offerers, and the discussion of the terms or scope of such contract, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically the agreement of use and support of a solid waste disposal system with the Southeastern Public Service Authority of Virginia.
Counsel, motion being ordered. Councilman Fawcett.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett, Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
That concludes our work session, and we will reconvene at 6:00 PM.